You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the November 5th meeting for the LaPorte County Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Welcome everyone to the LaPorte County Commissioners Meeting, Wednesday, November 5th, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge Allegiance, and Tommy, would you start us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commission President Connie Gremoroso.
Present.
Commission Vice President Steve Hallifield.
Present.
Commission Member Joe Haney.
Present.
All are present, you have a quorum.
Consider agenda, there's one change that we do need to make, and that's moving 11A to 10B, and it would be just for a discussion on the Franklin Bridge, because we already opened up the bids.
I'd also like to amend that, 11H, we'll take that Otis contract off the agenda.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consider approval of the October 15th, 2025 minutes.
I make a motion, accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration of claims.
We have two weeks of payroll claims, the first one is the week ending 10/17/2025, $1,479,615.22, and then again, 10/31, two weeks later, $1,460,722.25.
Motion to approve the payroll ending 10/17 of '25 and 10/31 of '25 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have operating expense claims in the amount of $2,124,327.44.
Make a motion, accept the expense claims.
Second, and just for the public certification, those, I had, I've been continuing to post those claims online at that Dropbox link, there's a bunch of letters involved with it, so the easiest way is just to go to my social media page and click the link and check out Dropbox and see the claims that we're voting on, minus, of course, the redacted names for the jurors.
So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public comment is now open.
Yeah, this is Tommy Kalavich from 1316 Ohio Street, I'm a Michigan City man, good morning to our distinguished and honorable LaPorte County Commissioners, and Attorney Diane, Mr. Rosenbaum, and everybody, department heads, and everybody here, I want to commend the LaPorte County Highway Department, the men and women of that department, last week they came out and picked up a four, total of four dead deer carcasses along the Wasniak Road corridor, people drive Wasniak Road like Cindy 500, there's a lot of other small animals that got hit, now that's a pretty gruesome job they have to do, but, you know, peace and love to those animals, um, I want to, got a little something to complain about, it's the Drug Free Partnership of LaPorte County, it was last November, a year ago, they came in front of the LaPorte County Council, it was Judge Greta Freeman and John Gilmore and, from Ton and Blank, and Mitch, the gentleman runs the, the recovery, men's recovery house over in Velpo, they wanted to put another recovery house at Wabash and Ann Street in Michigan City, they, they, the county council, they granted them a $750,000 allocation, $400,000 from the county opioid settlement, and $350,000 from the CDAT money, it's the county economic development income tax, that's an acronym you need, people need to know, they started taking that out of our taxes, maybe paychecks about 20 years ago, Mayor Angie said at her, at her town hall meeting that that's a private matter, that's not a private matter, he gave them $750,000, they're going to come in front of the city and ask for $250,000 from the city opioid settlement funds, they're also going to come back and ask for tens of thousands of dollars in permit fee waivers, so they're getting over a million dollars, so that is not a private matter, and the people in my neighborhood, they don't want it there, I personally, I don't, I would like to see that property developed, so I don't want that to remain as a greenfield site forever, but, you know, they, they, Francis, they want property that's donated to them, the Franciscan Alliance, they have, that they're going to don't, they got property out on Cool Spring by the medical group that they, and they won't tell us their alternate sites of what they want, and I think that's really horrible transparency on part of all your parts, and both the county council and, and the mayor, and then people from Ton and Blank, and the Drug Free Partnership that run that, they, we need to know what those alternate sites are going to be, other than that, I would just, you know, let us know, what, what the plan, after a year, I think if, if they're, if they're not going to go through with that, the county council needs to resend that $750,000 allocation, I think the prosecutor will get involved in that, you know, for these, probably, you have a start date and you have a completion date, they said, well, it's going to be nine months after we make our groundbreaking, that'll be our, our completion date, well, let's get going on that, I just want to say, go was, beat the slicers Friday night in our sectional championship game, and thank you for listening to me, thank you, go home, watch the rest of the meeting on TV.
And may I, may I make a suggestion that you go to the council? Okay, any, anyone else for public comment?
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Rest in room 421 Holly Road, obviously you all know why I'm here, I would think, the only thing I would like to make you guys aware of is you guys are going to have to really watch this social media stuff, it's getting pretty deep, people are posting stuff right and left without actually talking to people, they're going on other things that everybody else has said around the clock, and it's just wrong, this AI stuff, beware, I'm sure that you all seen the picture of the car on the bridge again, is that a fact?
Yep, I saw it.
You know, this is going to start happening a lot, and it's going to have to be dealt with, and it's going to have to be dealt with as a community, not just as an independent person on this council or on the Commissioner's side of it, you guys are really going to have to watch what's being said, on a lighter note, power outages down at the bridge, I'd really like somebody to step up and find out from NIPSCO why we continuously have power outages down there, it costs you guys two to three hours every time it happens, because I got to go down there and reset everything and bring everything back up and online, it's a continuing issue, it's been going on for years, and I would really like to see them fix whatever their problems are, so it just slows down a little bit for you. The other thing I want to do is I want to commend your bridge tenders, they've done an excellent job, I mean, they don't make erroneous calls, they don't call for nothing, when there's an issue they call and we respond, they've done an excellent job, they watch things like we've never had them watch before, makes my life a whole lot easier and it costs you guys a lot less money, middle of the night, I get a telephone call from the bridge tender, she says somebody's downstairs banging on the door, and I said, what are they doing? She said, they're screaming, I said, is it an emergency, call 911, get the police down there, whatever needs to be done, well, turns out it was a cop, okay, and someone had called 911 that the bridge hadn't opened, and they were upset about it, so, they responded, the police department did, the police go down there, there's nobody at the Franklin Street Bridge trying to get through, you know where they're at, they're at the railroad bridge, up around the corner, up around the bend, they couldn't get through, but yet they're calling up your bridge tenders and calling them Karen and all kinds of nasty names and being real belligerent with her, and she has no control over that, and when she tries to tell them, hey, call the number on the bridge, and they tell her that's her job, that's a little bit of an issue, and, and I want you guys to be aware of this, because there's been a lot of stuff floating out there that these guys aren't doing what they're supposed to do, and I'm telling you, they are, they do a good job, they do a fantastic job, I love them all to death, the other thing I want to talk about real quick is the cameras down there, there's been some issues with that, I used to have them on my telephone where, when I was working, and I needed to look at something, I could, without that, I know we're down there a lot during the winter now, because we're doing remodels and so on and so forth at rehabs, but when I'm not there, if there's a problem, I can look at my phone and I can see what's going on, I get a visual before I even head out the door, so I have an idea what I'm going to be dealing with, whether I'm going to need help, I need to call this gentleman, get some assistance, you know, down there, whatever the case is, I don't know whether that's still possible, or whether that's not, and you guys don't want, want that out there, that information, which is completely up to you guys, I don't want to step on anybody's toes, but, the other thing that I'd like to bring up here is, everybody wants to talk about money on the bridge, and, this is just by my calculation though, because I'm not privy, I don't work in the office, I don't have any of that information at my disposal, but I think that the total rehab so far has been close to $6 million, does that sound realistic, on what the work has been done so far?
Well, last couple contracts, last couple years.
So that's pretty close, I don't know what the issue is here, there was a bunch of money given away, the double track, I don't know how much that was.
Six million.
Where did that come from, if you don't mind me asking?
Highway.
Okay, that's a lot of money, I'm not saying it's bad for the community, I'm not saying it's good for the community, but when LaPorte County themselves needs something done, that money could have been spent better here, I believe, rather than there, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Public comment is still open, is there anyone else from the public?
Good morning, good early afternoon, Andy Skia, and I'm here speaking personally today on behalf of myself and Marley, our personal address is 1655 North Shebo Road, Michigan City, we just wanted to actually take a minute and give a shout out to our First Lady Juanita Haney, tomorrow's her birthday, so, I'm not sure if everybody here's aware, but LaPorte County can get a little political at times, but regardless of all that, every time we get an opportunity to see Juanita, or chat with Juanita at the Commissioner Council meeting, she always leaves that aside, she takes a minute to give Marley and I a hug and talk about real life, and we both enjoy those couple minutes we get to share with her, we would never reach out to her out of respect for one of our three leaders on our own, so we wanted to take a minute, come up here and wish her a happy birthday tomorrow, we hope she has a special day, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Happy birthday to her.
Thank you. Make sure to let her know, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one coming forward, we're going to close public comment, and we'll do department head comments.
Good morning, Monique Thomas, HR Director, I just want to come before you today and just let you guys know that we have, we are concluding our open enrollment this week, employees have until Friday to enroll by phone, they can contact me for the phone number, and I just want to get that out there, that if you aren't enrolled for the 2026 year with a representative with American Fidelity, you will not be covered, and, at the beginning of 2026, you will not be covered, thank you.
Thank you for that information. Any other department heads?
Good morning.
Amanda Lanar's Health Department, a few things, first of all, we still do have flu shots for employees, if there's anybody who still wants to get a flu shot, wasn't able to come to one of our clinics, just please give us a call and we'll make arrangements to make that happen, unless you're over 65, we don't have the high dose flu vaccine, so you'll have to go to a pharmacy like Walgreens or Sevius to be able to get that, so there's a little caveat there, I would like to invite everybody to view our new website, HeartSafeLPC, as you know, we launched an initiative earlier this year to make LaPorte County a heartsafe community, City of LaPorte did this a few years ago, and we're trying to take this countywide, on our website there, you can find where there are CPR classes, you can register an AED, there's a live map showing you where the closest AEDs are you, where you're at, it's kind of interesting, it's fun to play with to see how close they are from where you're standing, there's video resources, there's a tracker showing how close we are to getting to our goal to be able to apply for it, and, of course, it's going to tell you exactly what it means to be a heartsafe community, and what it takes to get us there, again, it's heartsafelpc.com, and we're doing that in partnership with Health Foundation of LaPorte, we're also going to be changing our office hours at the Michigan City office starting December 1st, we will be opening on Tuesdays and Thursdays for clinic days, and to offer birth certificates, death certificates, and permit renewals on those days, so, thank you.
And so, just so we explain, because I know you and I have talked, you're going to be moving the staff from there.
Correct.
To the LaPorte.
Yes, so there's, there's two staff there, they'll be moved to the LaPorte, we have an open position in LaPorte, they'll, one of those positions will be filling, so, and we have plenty of room and plenty of work for them in LaPorte.
And then how many positions do you still have open?
We, that will leave us with three open nursing positions.
Perfect, so if anyone from the public knows nurses that need a job, please see all HR.
We have RN positions, LP and LPN positions, and part-time nursing positions that are open.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other department heads? Good morning.
Mike Holen, Building Commissioner, just wanted to report to you that our data migration should be completed finally this week, we're getting rid of two software programs consolidating into one, we started this a while ago when I first took over and evaluated the department and decided it needed to be modernized, and then we had a 17-month delay, and then some other delays on top of that, but we got the new software in place, we're getting the rest of the data this week, I've also employed AI, it's a temporary experiment, but it seems to be doing good, they're able to answer questions to the public and provide more service right there on the website, we've been training it, and it's getting better and more efficient, and, and also, there's a spot in there to cover FOIA requests, so people can go right on the website, seek information from us, and get immediate results, such as querying whether there's a permit active at a certain site or whatnot, that may help us actually increase revenue by tracking down places that are doing work without a permit and whatnot, and I, I think Diane in your office has actually used some of those tools on our website, so, anybody have any feedback, get ahold of us, because this is still new, and we're still working out tweaks, but so far, I'm pretty happy with it, that's all I have.
Thank you for the hard work, I, I know that you did a lot of planning for that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Any other department heads?
Madam President, I do have one, thank you, I do have one follow-up from the last meeting, now that our team, our Attorney Mr. DiMartino is back, I'd like to revisit the, the issue regarding attorneys doing work without being directly directed by our county attorney, I would like to revisit the motion that I made, and I would move that.
I have a question, I, when, at the last meeting, how was, how'd you all end it? Was it tabled?
Tabled.
So I guess the first.
Yeah.
Motion would be to take it off the table.
I would make a motion to take that item off the table.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now you can go ahead.
All right, so, I'd like to revisit that now with, with the motion to, a motion to, phrases gently, our county, well, before I say that, our county attorney was appointed at the beginning of this year, he does an excellent job, and, you know, as, as the Board, we have a county attorney to direct all legal matters and to address those, so, with that thought in mind, and given some past history here from the past couple of weeks, I would make a motion to have that all work by all county departments, or any legal work that needs to be done be run through our county attorney directly, and any assignments that need to be made need to, that, that are given out, will be done by the county attorney at the direction of majority of the Board.
So, have.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
So I have a question, we have a motion and a second, open for questions, so what, what cases have gone out without the attorney's approval, have, do you know Mr. DiMartino of any cases that were brought up?
There's been, there's been some matters that I learned about afterwards, but regardless, I don't think that this is a bad thing, because if, at least I'll know what's pending, and then I can reach out to you all and say, this is not something that's within my wheelhouse, I'd like to refer to, and then you all can tell me, it doesn't have to come to a public meeting, because most of the time it's litigation, so, you know, if that works for you all, I'll do whatever the Board wants.
So, but I, the question is, are there, so, there were some cases that were existing that they continued, but were there any that were just, some attorney just came in and, and took over cases?
There have been matters where legal work has been performed that I didn't learn until afterwards, it wasn't inappropriate, but I, but it did not come to me as a point person where I know what's going on.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it wasn't inappropriate.
It should go to you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with.
Yes.
I'm, but agree, everything needs to go to you, but I just want to make sure that nothing was done illegally or inappropriately.
No, I, the work was, wasn't, was not inappropriate, the work was needed.
Okay.
But it did not, you know, sort of like we're trying to develop protocols.
Right.
It, the protocol wasn't followed.
Okay.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 So, department heads need to understand this, so I don't know if you want, we need to send out an email to department heads directly, because sometimes department heads will, you know.
Yeah, please do, we did have, that's another reason why I bring it up this week, just this past week, we had an issue that came up that wasn't ran by you, and.
I don't have, I don't have like an all department head email, so I guess I can send, I'll just send something to Diane, and then she can, she can blast it out, if that works.
Perfect.
Please do.
And of course, there are other departments that already have attorneys, you know, that, that work directly with them, so those department heads would not be, like Health Department, they have, you know, your attorney, and the assessor's office uses Brad, Brad Adamsky and things like that, so that would not be included.
Right, no, there's, I think there's just issues that deal with the county commissioners.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, request, none, old business, A, consider burn ban for LaPorte County Townships.
I've had a couple, three township fire chiefs reach out to me, they don't see a need for this to continue, and I'd also like to say that I think from here on out, this should be something that the department chiefs, fire departments, take care of on themselves, because I'm not so sure the county commissioners have any authority to do that.
Under the statute, they do, we do, you have authority, but in the past, we've had people who have tried to punt it up to the commission, so at the local level, they didn't want to take, make the call, so.
Yeah, the township chiefs, they're, they're out there in the field, they know what's going on, so I, I think it's something they should, if they, if they don't want their constituents burning within the township, they should just let everybody know through the trustee and tell them, I just, I just think that's.
They have the authority to do so.
Okay, that's what I want to know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would, I would agree and echo those thoughts, unless there's something really, what happened, well, the first time this happened, there was a really outstanding issue that had occurred, severe drought conditions a year or two ago, that, that was pretty much unprecedented here, you know, like we just did over this, the past meeting or two, you know, LaPorte County is a very large county, and, you know, for those of you, you know, you could get a two or three inches of rain in LaCrosse, and nothing in Michigan City, or vice versa, some days, so it's definitely best practice probably to leave it to the fire departments to do that, and they have full authority too, unless there's some, you know.
So can I have a motion?
Make a motion to repeal the burn ban.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, and plenty of discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then, we added B, discussion on Franklin Bridge.
Chair Lacy, superintendent, so, last meeting, we came and got permission, got open bids for the Franklin Street Bridge, and we had a partial bid, Andy, of course, was a project manager, and we went to council at the last meeting to get funding, and they did approve the funding through local, through our budgeted money, so he's just going to give a report on what's going on now.
Hello again, Andy Skia, Mark was electric this time, 203 East Harrison Street, Michigan City, Indiana, so the final number for the complete Phase 2 rehabilitation would be $1,262,000, as was presented at the council meeting, of that money, the little over $300,000 of that would be work that would be performed by our firm and retained in-house, so the rest of that work would be in accordance with the partial bid that was received and the project documents before that, if you should so choose today to make that official and move that along, I have received an official closure permit from the Federal Coast Guard in Ohio, the closure dates, our request for that permit were January 5th to March 15th, that way we can let the city, Michigan City, get through other holiday festivities, and the residents and visitors get to enjoy Washington Park for Christmas, so, that, that's how we would proceed from there, the 5th, if you get, do move again, I have one question about the city, they have the coldest night of the year, coldest day of the year planned to walk, walk at first, now they say drive, over the bridge on February 28th, depending on the weather, I do think we could accommodate that schedule with your wishes, we would just have to prioritize our work, so for from, for part of our work, we have to remove the road grating to access the structural beams underneath the road, to do some repairs to those beams that are cracked, but I think we could move that work up, normally, we like to save some of that work towards the end, because the weather historically is better towards March than January, but I think we could shift our schedule if you choose to accommodate that, but obviously, before that, you have to decide if you want the project to move forward, but that's what we need to talk about today, if you would, please, thank you.
What's the pleasure of this Board?
Well, I'd like to discuss this, I've got a couple of questions, but do we make a motion first?
Yes.
Okay, make a motion to accept this.
Do you have a motion and a second, open for discussion.
This Halyard bid, that was a partial bid, correct?
That's correct, and I.
So, that'll be about $960,000?
That's correct.
$960,000, which is totaled up here on this page.
Uh, yeah, $960,000 plus, so when we were hired for project management, we did get our standard project management markup, so that's added to there, and obviously, we did not mark up the work we would perform ourselves.
And so then $300,000 extra is work that you're going to perform, that's not covered under the bid?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, and there would have been some of that work performed anyways, that was in the project management, but that work would have just been billed kind of open-ended, but now what we did is take that work that would have been open-ended with the original contract for project management, and we rolled that into one lump sum number, so you actually have a total before the job starts, before the jo, until after the job's over.
And that'll be 1.260.
1262.
262, okay, that's all I have.
While we're talking about, so, sorry about that, while we're talking about the, the closure portion, because normally, you know, the need to go in certain phases, not, not just because of the weather, but just because of the.
The work.
Ease of, ease of doing the work and, you know, not, not backtracking, how, how difficult will it be to shift around that schedule versus what you would normally do for that coldest day of the year?
I think that, that will be reasonable, we'll just have to watch a window, so I believe their walk or drive was February 28th, so we'll have almost two months there, so we'll make sure we have the materials there, when we get a couple week window where the weather looks suitable, we'll attack that work, and the bridge would be closed that whole time regardless, so the closure permit from the Coast Guard would be from the 5th to the 15th, regardless of how we phase that work, just sometimes we would be inside, sometimes we would be on top, and sometimes we would be under, so it's mainly a question for me, do you want me to make that a priority to make that happen, because it'd just possibly be a little inconvenience to the guys, but, you know, they're thankful for the work, we're all thankful for the work, so if that's your wishes, we'd be happy to do that.
So this is like an event that Michigan City has, or?
Yeah, I don't know if it's a fundraiser or an event, I'm, I'm not sure, they just reached out to me when they saw that the bridge, you know, was up for more rehab, of the planning department, and they said that they had that coldest day or coldest night of the year to cross the bridge into Washington Park, and they asked, you know, what, what our closure period was, I told them that our window would encompass that, and they asked if they could walk it, and I said, you know, I'd have to ask the commission's approval, but I'm sure we could do something to get you to walk it.
I have a question, how come there's nobody from Michigan City here asking or discussing this with us, you know, we've had issues with Michigan City, with other projects, how come somebody from Michigan City? City is not here?
So, I did tell them that I would ask. So, I don't know why they're not here, but they reached out to me, and I told the planning department that I would be happy.
I think somebody from the planning department needs to come and explain this. We understand that you can accommodate, but we've, that's all I need to say.
Okay.
But it's your call.
Is this, they do this every year, and the only, the only problem we have this year is because you're removing the deck to work underneath?
Uh, we've had the, I've never heard of this.
Okay. If that, I could think of better things to do on a coldest day of the year.
We can table this, maybe perhaps we can table this and then just get someone from Michigan City, because I.
Ms. Gamarosa, I don't know that you need to table it because his, his motion is just to move forward with the project. Whether we're going to, whether we're going to change the schedule of the project.
Let me figure that out later.
Michigan City, that would be something you can take up different.
Worst case scenario, if it doesn't fit into your schedule, weather-wise or anything else, they just don't get to do it.
I, no different than when a boat's there.
Yep.
I would never, we always know our role. I would never let someone cross your bridge. I would never open your bridge for boat. I would never do nothing with your property without getting your permission. So, I'm literally here to tell you what was asked of us, no different than when I email and say, the bridge is stuck. Can we go fix it? Or can we open it for the Coast Guard? For me, it's cut and dry. Yes or no? Do you want me to accommodate or not? That's it.
Yeah. And how about if we just kind of leave it open where we give the opportunity of Michigan City to come and ask at a later date, and we can approve it today, but we can also not, like, just completely shut it down and, and, and give them the opportunity to come back?
Yep. That's very reasonable. Thank you.
So, if we can have a motion?
And make a motion that we proceed forward with this.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. Consider opening bids for material for the 2026 year. Highway Superintendent, Charity Glazer.
Limestone. You hear me now? Can you hear me now? Okay. And this is from South Lake Stone. And the bid package is in order. The next is for Class 1 Crushed Stone, and it's from U.S. Aggregates. The bid package is in order. The next one is from Reeve Riley, and it's for Class 2. The bid package is in order. The next is Class 2. It's from Central Paving. The bid package is in order.
Blue class.
This is Class 3 Slag, and it's from Beam Stirbor, Beam Stirbor. The bid package is in order.
New class.
Class 5 Triple J Mar Petroleum. Bid package is in order. Class 6 Michael Todd Industries. So, since Michael Todd is a supply company, just for information, they didn't put together a bid form, but they do have the necessary information on their price list, and they have provided us $1,000 for the charity. So, it's in order. Class 7, and that's from Deepco Metal Culverts. Bid package is in order. Class 7, the last one is from St. Regis Culvert. Bid package is in order. At this time, I would recommend that Ms. Glazer take it under advisement with her team and then come back and report to you.
Wait, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move on. Consider 2026 contract between Purdue Extension and Lepore County. Have you reviewed that?
I have reviewed it. It's fine. Same as.
What's the pleasure of this board?
Make a motion. We accept this contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Consider resolution for the commissioner's sale.
They conducted the tax sale last month, I believe, and there's a substantial amount of properties that are still listed that have been for sale for several years. I spoke with Ms. Winsky's office, Mr. Rosenbaum. I spoke with Treasurer Barney. I also spoke with Mistress Schultz on the assessor's office. I, I think we need to move forward to this, get these properties on, back on the tax rolls, and just get rid of them. Let them, people start paying taxes on them. There's a lot of questions that have been asked in my office about properties that are unbuildable in areas of the county like Hudson Lake, Sonny Lake. If you can't build on them, no one's paying taxes. If a property owner next to them wants to purchase them, but they're not going to pay 10 times what the value is because they've gone tax sale for so many times, this might be a way to get them back on the tax rolls and benefit the community out there.
We have a motion?
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Do we need to read that resolution, Guy?
Well, so. The resolution's not complete.
Okay.
So, at this point in time, I would suggest that we just have it in the record. And then, we could read it, but we're going to have to revisit this once we get the actual listing of the properties. So, we can get a motion to read it by title only, and then we can revisit it at some point in time.
The only mention that I would like to add is that it's right now tentatively scheduled for March 18th.
Okay.
Okay?
So, if we can get, and this would be resolution number?
Eight.
Okay.
So, do you want to do a res, like, a support, and then this way, we can kind of like close up, like, the dollar amounts and the?
And come back present later?
Yeah, I would, let's consider this like just the first reading type of thing, even though you don't have to do it with a resolution. So, this is a resolution established in the intent to conduct a commissioner's sale, to sell tax sale certificates for properties that are severely delinquent in payment of property taxes. And then, we'll just revisit it once we get the list. And this way, it's out in the public, and everybody knows that come March, we're going to hopefully have a commissioner's sale. We don't need to vote on it or anything.
Perfect. Okay, moving on. Consider accepting the recommendation of the plan commission for the Parkman Plot subdivision.
I make a motion that we accept that. Like I said, I was at the plan commission when we approved it. There's, Mr. Parkman's doing a great job helping to bring development to this county.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Moving on. Consider the Chubb Platte subdivision. And again, we would just be accepting the recommendations of the plan commission.
Again, just as the previous one, I make a motion that we accept this. I was served on a plan commission. He presented everything there, and there was no issues from anybody on the plan commission.
Excellent. Second.
We have a motion and a second. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, consider resolution adopting Lepore County Housing Analysis and Action Agenda. Matt Riordan, our economic development person, will be presenting.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamarosa and County Commissioners. Good morning. It's, I'm here today with some colleagues of mine that did a great job from the Unity Foundation. And it has to do with housing and the housing study and a report that was done. The Unity Foundation set about, they've done a lot of things in the county, and for those of you listening or watching, you should look them up. They, they do a lot of amazing things. But their group got together and got involved in getting a very competitive grant years ago. And I'll let Maggie Sparts talk about how that came about. And part of that grant process had to do with the housing analysis and what to do. And I, I'm trying to recall off the top of my head. It was, I think, in 2021. But they interviewed a lot of people, the public. They had open houses. They had talked to elected officials, and housing was one of the critical areas, and how to get to affordable housing, and how to get to sustainable housing, and how to continue to grow, and how that affects communities. And then, especially when you look at that aspect in the light of how Indiana taxes work. Governments run an income tax as well. Well, you need people to have income tax, and if you don't have people, well, they don't have income tax. If you don't have houses, you don't have places for people to go. So, part of the study that was commissioned early on had to do with how, how can the communities in Lepore County attack or try to, to work through this challenge? What are the deficiencies that we have in this particular county? And so, all those questions were laid out, and the group came and they did a study. And I know that Commissioner Gamarosa and Carlton Bishop really kind of got in the middle of this. And admittedly, housing's not my specialty, but, but the tax side of the housing and the development and construction and what that yield certainly is. So, we had a lot of detailed discussions about where are good places and how should it work? And things like, is it better to work where you have existing water and sewer to minimize sprawl? Or is it better to build housing projects in the middle of nowhere? And then, what do you do for water and sewer? And I think this commission and the council, going back to some requests that were funded to, to local communities here in Lepore County, did directly with, we will help you fund an expansion of your water and sewer plant, and, and did it twice. And what does that do? That helped places like Kingsford Heights continue to grow because they already made an investment. So, part of that housing study dealt with that. Subsequent to that, you know, COVID happened. Some people, you know, it was kind of a strange time here, but it certainly had an impact on, on the, the housing market. So, it was at the, again, the request, Commissioner Gamarosa's like, should we, what should we, should we update this? And along comes our friends at the Unity Foundation saying, hey, we're going to do this. So, we talked to all the commissioners at the time, and they were like, yeah, we should do this. Went out, got a bid. They were fortunate to work with a former colleague of mine at an engineering company, a development company around here, Beth Schrader, who, when she came on the scene, I said, perfect. Not only that, you might remember Beth Schrader. She was the city planner in Lepore. So, she had a lot of knowledge. And the organization went through, did their process, updated that report, and I'm going to turn this over to Beth and Maggie and their team. They're going to have a brief presentation. The, the full report will be available. We'll put that up online. And there's some interesting things, but just a really quick summary is that there's still a demand for housing. There's still a demand for affordable housing. The more collaboration we have from governmental units existing and overlapping, the better opportunity it will be to affect cost of housing, ergo, affordable housing. So, the other part of the study that is really important, that is critical to community development and their ability to be sustainable is to have life cycle housing. And that means housing for old people like me, and housing for less ambulatory people also like me. But housing for people, younger people, and people talk about brain drain and where do kids go? Well, they go places where they want to live, and it's fun and it's cool. Then, there's mid-range housing and family housing and neighborhood housing. So, it addresses those issues, but it underscores the importance of having that and trying to work towards it because not every community has it. But the, the smart communities are those that are striving towards it. So, I'll, I'll turn it over to Beth and have her group come up and talk about the study a little bit. And then, after you guys take a look at the study, I would encourage the commission to consider accepting this and passing this resolution in support of this. We'll be doing the same at the plan commission further down at the month and getting that information to them. So, with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Maggie.
Well, Matt just said it all. Hi. Hello, Commissioners. Good to see you. Maggie Sparts, former president of the Unity Foundation. I did want to introduce our new president of the Unity Foundation, Jerry Pat Gabbert. We actually coordinated our costume, our wardrobe today. No, just kidding. It was an accident. No, I appreciate everything you do. Unity Foundation's mission is to strengthen Lepore County now and forever, and we've been doing that for over 30 years in many number of ways. And sometimes, it brings us in partnership with city government, county government, state government, and sometimes even federal government because no one can do it all, right? So, what Matt was referring to is our Vibrant Communities process. There's a website called vibrantlpcounty.com, and it has the feedback from over 1,000 residents that we did in 2019 and 2020, and housing came out from that as being number one. We then partnered with the Office of Community Economic Development to do the first housing study because none had never been done countywide. And so, we did that, and then some great things happened. We used that study and got a $3.6 million grant from the Lilly Endowment to help implement parts of that. That's a whole nother story. But that's money that's coming into Lepore County to help the county, the cities, and our communities to modernize, to help do some of these things that came out of the study. So, we're not flying blind. So, then, talking with Carlton and some other folks, it was like, hey, we should update that study because a lot's happened, the National, New National Park, all the new development, you know, what's changed? And so, we hired S E H, Beth Schrader, to help us with that. So, as soon as she gets up, she'll, she's the expert in this. She will talk to you about it, give you the brief update. But this is, just for the audience to, it's about 100 pages, but it's a really interesting read. And we will also have that up on our website soon, uflc.net to do that. But we do wish that the commissioners would approve this because developers can't really use it unless it's been approved by a formal body. And we did all the work. We put up the money. You guys put up some money. We put up most of it, but it's just a great product, and then we can build on that from there. So, there's just a lot of good stuff in there. And having grown up here and having struggled sometimes finding a place to live in Lepore County, it's important. So, Beth, are you ready? And I will introduce to my, my colleague, Beth Schrader.
Before you leave, because I don't know if you'll come back up here, I really want to thank you. You have done so much for our county, for our cities. I really appreciate all your work, and you really did help us last year bring a lot of value to Mitch Bishop, our planner. I mean, the things that you said and just what you working with us throughout the years, I greatly appreciate you, and I know you're going to be retiring, and we will miss you.
Thank you very much. It has been my true honor and we need to do just more of this. But especially for the young people in the room from R E M C, their youth leadership program. Some of them go on and do great things. So I don't, you're not there yet, but you will be. So keep doing good things, we need you. But anyway, here's Beth Schrader, Beth, take it away.
Thank you, Maggie. I'm really happy to be here. This report was a great reintroduction. I've been away from Laporte County for a number of years. And it was really exciting to me to dive in, talk to my friends here and also to learn about all of the exciting development that's happening. So we got a good introduction from both Matt and Maggie. But just as a review, we, this is an update of the 21 study, which was very comprehensive. And the, the high level themes that came out of that study are here. So our job was to validate all of the data, refresh it, make sure that we had the latest and greatest, and then see if these things were still an issue and if there are new issues that needed to be addressed. So number one, housing supply shortage. In the 21 study, there was a goal set by local leaders. And based on that goal, there was not enough new construction happening. So that kind of sets the tone for, for everything. There's also a mismatch between our housing types and our household needs. So we're seeing our household size shrink. And the, the housing stock isn't changing a lot. It's pretty static, it's old, and it was built in a time mainly where we had larger nuclear families as the predominant household type. There's affordability challenges. And with that, the hidden cost burdens specifically with transportation. So even though housing costs are comparatively low here in Laporte County to some of our neighboring counties, when you add in the cost of transportation, getting to work and back, getting to all your activities of daily living, that kind of knocks the affordability out. Socioeconomic and racial inequalities, households of color and low-income residents are disproportionately affected. Aging and underutilized housing inventory. So I mentioned that, a lot of the homes here in the county are older. Many are in poor condition and there's lots of vacant lots. Some inefficient land use and infrastructure costs. This is something that is of particular interest to the county. So low density development has led to lower tax revenues and then higher infrastructure costs. And, and that's something that I think is of particular interest to, to you all. And then overall, a need for strategic housing policy and implementation. So just the fact that we're re-engaging with this data, talking about it again, I think is, is really important. And what we found when we went through and updated all the data is that all of those issues are still present, they still need to be addressed. So just a little more information about household size. These are some charts that explain what we've seen over a few generations here. So since 1960, when we had a whole lot of large, larger families, those are all dropping. And we're seeing a lot more one and two person households. And in Laporte County, one-person households make up 30% of all households. And typically, they're not wanting to live in a large, single-family home. When we look at the household types, rate of household formation, we look at our aging population, which is not a Laporte County issue specifically. It's something that we're looking at nationwide. Lower fertility rates and also outmigration. So there's more people leaving to live, leaving Laporte County to live elsewhere than there are new people coming in to live in Laporte County. So all of those things combined, looking at a historical, historical trends, what you see is that if you project it out to 2050, it doesn't look so rosy. We're, we're losing population and we're losing housing, households. So this is something that warrants our, our attention and, and efforts. So that was the status quo. How do we, how do we chart a new course? How do we grow? So after looking at all the data, meeting with a number of stakeholders from the cities, from the county, we settled in on kind of these five key strategies. So stimulate population growth, look at economic development and promote Laporte County as a remote work-friendly community. And really tout the quality of life because there's a lot that Laporte County has to offer. Increase the household formation. So encourage smaller households by encouraging or supporting diverse housing types. So not just big, single-family homes on large lots. We're looking at a variety of housing types, town homes, accessory dwelling units, senior-friendly units, smaller homes that fit the smaller households that we're seeing. This also could come with an incentive for first-time home buyers and young renters to form independent households. So modernize the housing policy. So this is an opportunity for your planning departments in cities, towns, and in the county to kind of scrub the zoning code, identify, you know, what's allowed. Are there things that you want to allow that currently are not? So make sure that there's mixed use and higher density development that is available in growth corridors. Whenever possible, streamline the permitting and infrastructure expansion to open up this land for, for development, making it housing-ready. Number four, investing in infrastructure. So expanding sewer, water, and broadband access and prioritize transportation links to some of the new job centers that we're seeing. And then finally, retaining and attracting millennials. So really developing the housing and then amenities that appeal to this group and support workforce housing near employment centers and near transit. So how, how do we do this? What could this look like? We, we, we don't really like the status quo. You see it here, that's the blue line at the bottom. What, what could we do? What could be alternate futures for Laporte County? So we have two other options here that are based on what we feel is a, a reasonable, achievable growth goal based on peer communities nearby and that have similar qualities to Laporte County. And with that, you see a, three scenarios. So the status quo that reflects the continued decline, then maintain population scenario that assumes some moderate interventions. So that has a annual growth rate from 0.02 to 0.1. And that just is like a stabilization. And the aspirational growth scenario is the green one. And that would be reflective of more aggressive investments and increasing growth to 0.2%. One thing that I think Unity Foundation and Lilly look at is the housing permits issued. This shows kind of how we're comparing with some of the neighboring counties. And what you see is the opportunity for growth. So Laporte County is orange at the bottom. And what we'd like to see is that, that trend going up. I feel like especially the growth that's happening in City of Laporte and Michigan City right now, some of our other towns is, is definitely going in the right direction. And I think that we can expect to see increased growth in building permits. So a little bit deeper dive into some of the information that we got specifically on Laporte County. So just wanted to highlight some of the stakeholder feedback we got. We have some of the exciting new employment centers nearby. And we think that some of the rural communities, the small towns that are in Laporte County are well-poised to grow, to support that new, new employment. So some of the projects that we highlighted are the cottages at Kingsford Heights and then also new Durham Estates in Westville. And there's a lot of exciting work that's happening in Laporte County right now with updating comprehensive plans and looking at zoning. I think that what the planning department is doing to encourage full subdivision process and get a more efficient land use pattern when instead of, you know, your typical strip development where you're missing out on the opportunity to really make the best use of the land that you have available. As Matt mentioned, like one of the key factors is infrastructure. And what you see here in this map are the communities that have the infrastructure that is able to grow. And so this is just a good visualization of where the growth in the county makes the most sense. And then we're highlighting the CPO Sunrise subdivision there. Another opportunity for the county is to help invest in growth at transit centers. So we do have the Hudson Lake Station and there is opportunity there to, to work in tandem with the investments that NICD has made and introduce greater density in that location. So with that, we want to diversify our land use anchors. That is probably more important in the Michigan City transit locations. Emphasize housing inequity and adopt flexible zoning and phasing. So countywide trends and strategic shifts that we saw post-COVID, there really has been a boom in the county as a whole. And that's been led by Michigan City and by City of Laporte, also happening in the county. But there's over 550 housing units in various stages of development across the county. And this really feels like a renaissance for Laporte County. There's also been policy and planning shifts. We're seeing a lot of investment in our comprehensive planning, looking at our, our zoning. I think our cities are doing a great job. I think the county is doing a great job keeping that momentum going and really paying attention to this issue. Also, looking at strategic growth areas. Growth at Hudson and Sogany Lakes adjacent to the, the business, the Enterprise Center in St. Joseph County has great potential. Sewer improvements in that area can really unlock new housing units and it's, it's a wonderful opportunity for the county. And like Matt said, it's really important, there is an aging population in Laporte County. Making sure that we have the full spectrum of housing available as, as people, you know, cradle to grave. All right. And then just a note about the, the two main cities we have in Laporte County. They, they have some ambitious plans and they're making progress on them. It's really heartening to see all the work that's been done. But overall, so they have targets of Michigan City, 1,800 units over five years. That will be amazing for the county and for Michigan City. And Laporte has a target of 900 or more for-sale units and 750 rentals. So that, that is the type of ambition that we need in order to reverse the trends that we've seen historically. So the action items that were developed in 21, we validated them. We think that they make a lot of sense. We looked at those and said, what is missing? I think the thing that we settled on was adopting or enhancing our growth mindset. So really taking it up a notch. So adopting and implementing a growth mindset in all of our cities and towns and in the county to really, really emphasize that housing is such an important component of us as a healthy county, community economically. And, and it, it's just something that is, is so important. I think that we're seeing that this growth mindset has taken hold and what can we do to accelerate it? The other items, and these are repeated from the 21 plan. Build a spectrum of housing to unlock growth. Establish a housing trust fund. Support commercial centers with dense, walkable housing. Manage growth at the edge and continue the conversation. And I think that's what we're doing right now is continuing the conversation. So I really appreciate your, your attention to this and your support of, of this effort. And with that, I think I'd like to open it up to questions.
Question I have is, you're talking about growth around the surrounding cities. An issue here we've got is if someone wants to build a subdivision on the outside, in the county, outside the city limits, and people want to move to the county, well, if they provide sewer and water to them, bingo, they're going to smack dab and grab that and call it annexation. So that might deter, I think. People want to move to the country if they know immediately within three or five years you're going to be annexed into the city for higher taxes and they may not want to live in a city. Has, have you guys looked at that, those ideas?
I think that annexation is, it can be a thorny issue. I think for the cities and towns, it is an important tool so that they do have the tax base to provide the services that they need to. And that's where I think we just call for greater coordination and cooperation between all of the governmental units that are operating in the county to find win-win solutions. And I, I think you're right that if people are specifically hoping to be in the county, a location at the edge of the city is probably not the best for them. And there, I don't think there's anything that the county is doing to preclude country living. So I mean, you can still have a large lot with septic and have your, your country lifestyle. If you are hooking into the utilities near the city, it's, it's not quite that, it's not quite that lifestyle.
Any other questions?
No, I went through this pretty in-depth back when the study first came out, so.
It was quite extensive study.
Okay, so what would be the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that we.
Right, so the resolution is going to come up, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just want to read it by title only?
That would be the first motion.
Okay, make a motion, read it by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to read by title only. All those in favor say aye.
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 Resolution 2025-09, a resolution of the Laporte County Commissioners adopting the Laporte County Housing Analysis and Action Agenda.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, so we're set.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we'll get you a copy of the resolution, signed resolution.
All right, wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you again. Moving on, consider proxy appointments for Plan Commission for two board members.
There's two of us that have to be replaced for proxy only on the Plan Commission vote because of the solar ordinance update. I spoke with Mr. DiMatino this morning a little bit. I had a lady lined up, but it has to be a commissar, correct?
Yes, according to the Plan Commission lawyer, Mr. Biji.
Okay, so.
The proxy for the commissioner has to be a commissioner.
Okay, so I'm, and then the other person, Joe Talos, we have not come up with one for him yet. So I, I think we just need to wait till the next meeting to do these appointments.
Well, actually, can we just make the appointment for the commissioner?
You can, yeah, you can split it up. You can make the appointment for the commissioner and then at the next meeting, your person for a proxy. Because I don't know if the proxy vote is going to be coming up for a while anyway, but this way it's in place.
Okay, so I'd like to step down as a commissioner and make a motion to make Commissioner Haney the appointment for, the proxy appointment for Commissioner Hallifield.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Do you accept?
I know we've got. I know we've got... I... If no one, if you don't want to do it, then I would accept it, but...
It's just that I know you have a history of being on the planned commission, and I think that you did a good job when you tightened it up a couple of years back. And so I just think you would be the better person.
All right, yeah, if you're declining, then yeah, then I would have to accept.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, and then we'll hold over the other board seat until the following commissioners' meeting. Hopefully, they'll be able to send applications to the three commissioners, and then we'll be able to...
I hope so. Well, the way I understand it is the person whose vote is being taken away, it has to have a proxy, is the one that's supposed to procure that, correct?
You'll have to discuss that with the planned commission lawyer. Yep.
Because it's this board who actually does the appointment, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, moving on. Consider opening bids for first-floor bathrooms and the assessors' break room in the Hyler Building Commission? I mean, not Building Commission, no, Maintenance Department.
Good morning. Reed Smith, Assistant Director of Building Maintenance.
Okay.
First bid is from Larson Daniels.
I hate to be making you wait.
Take your time.
But I don't see a surety bond in here. But as I understand, you all are going to hold this over, so maybe we can get their
Would that make the application incomplete?
It would, but I understand that you're not really taking action on it today. So, I mean, everything else is here, and maybe I'm missing it. It could be stuck to the back of another piece of paper. Let me just take a look through there, and we'll go on to the next one. So I think I would like to look at what we actually put out for the bid.
I have a copy here. I don't see surety bond listed in here.
Yeah, each bidder shall guarantee a good faith, submit a 10% deposit or surety bond. Again, I could be missing this for Gibson Lewis also. Do you see it, surety?
Okay, there it is.
Yeah, it is something that could be, yeah. Then again, the request says it's a good faith, and it's not a must-have, so I would ask that they just provide us one, since you're not going to be taking full action on this.
Okay.
Everything else is in order. Third bid is from New Tech Corporation. Surety bond in this one. Okay. New Tech's bid is in order. Bid's in order. And the last one?
You got close with that one.
Oh, oh, sorry. No, that's it.
So I would then make a motion to show those timely received, just so it's on the record that we have.
So it's my understanding that the Facilities Department is going to review everything over the next week or so and see what type of work is there, and then come back and report to you at the next meeting? Is that correct?
The 19th, correct.
Yep, that works.
I'd also like to say it's nice to see that we're getting more and more companies bidding on our projects here in this county, as opposed in the past.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second for the Maintenance Department to review these and bring back their decision at the next commissioners' meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. And then this kind of concludes our meeting, but I'd like to give...
Ms. Grammerosa? I think we need the bids.
Oh, okay.
Come back.
Yep.
Come on back up, sorry.
That's okay. Charity Glazer, Highway Superintendent. So we bid out six classes, and this is for our annual materials that we use, such as stone, slag, patch, fuel, signs, and culverts. All classes got at least one bidder, some two. We're going to accept all the bids, and we'll use the bidders as the less cost on each thing that we're going to buy. So we will accept all the bids.
All right. So I would make a motion to show all bids timely received and accepted, with preference going to the lowest bidder in each class first.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then just because we have a large group in the audience, REMC does a great job, not only as a business working in our county, but really helping our youth. If you would like to come up and talk a little bit about the program that they, that you offer our students, I mean, it's really greatly appreciated.
Thank you for that opportunity. Dave Howell, Kankakee Valley REMC. So we started this program four years ago. We take 12 to 14 juniors from our service territory, which usually involves Porter, LaPorte, and Stark Counties. And we just wanted to introduce them to as many different possible things that we could over the eight-month period. We meet during the school day, which kind of makes us unique from other clubs. These kids are already busy. So we went to the schools, we got permission to meet during the school day, so we spend seven hours once a month together. We'll hit this commissioner meeting, we'll, Judge Havens will allow us to sit in the jury's box during pre-trial arraignment. They'll learn all about that process. We'll go down to the state Capitol, we'll learn at that level, talk to our state representatives down there. But not just politics. We try to expose them to different opportunities, different, unique opportunities in our surrounding area, hopefully to keep these kids from graduating college and deciding to move away to the big city, just kind of introducing them to the opportunities we have right here. So we always have a great group of kids. It seems like the last three or four years are, one of our students is the Lilly Foundation recipient, so it's just a great program. We're proud of all these kids, and we're just very fortunate that the company allows us to do this. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And hopefully, we'll see one of you sitting up here one day. So thank you. With that...
I have one more thing to add. I got an email from NiSource, NIPSCO. November is Carbon Oxide Awareness Month. Check your batteries in your carbon dioxide detectors. If you don't have one, and you want to get one, go ahead and purchase one. NIPSCO on their website has symptoms that you can look for if you think you're having problems, and what you should do to, you know, make your house a little bit safer. I just want to pass that on.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out.